Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Kent City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Kent City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Welcome to Kent City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Kim, if you could please call the roll. Kim, if you could please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph? Mayor Ralph?
Here. Here.
Council President Corr? Council President Corr?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce? Councilmember Boyce?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd? Councilmember Boyd? Councilmember Fincher? Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour? Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Michaux? Councilmember Michaux?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Kim. Right, thank you, Kim. We have one item on our agenda this evening, and it is the purchase of property located We have one item on our agenda this evening, and it is the purchase of property located at 2061068 Avenue South in the city of Kent. at 2061068 Avenue South in the city of Kent. Council had a presentation at the last council meeting. Council had a presentation at the last council meeting. This is something that we've been talking about over the last several years, issues This is something that we've been talking about over the last several years, issues with this building, with our other buildings, and the need to figure out a path forward. with this building, with our other buildings, and the need to figure out a path forward. So that is what is in front of us this evening. So that is what is in front of us this evening. I am going to turn it over to Tammy White to walk us through what's in the packet, and I am going to turn it over to Tammy White to walk us through what's in the packet, and then we'll call for a motion. then we'll call for a motion.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
So, Council, included in your packet is a purchase and sale agreement, which if you
So, Council, included in your packet is a purchase and sale agreement, which if you
approve it today, we would move forward with purchasing the Center Point Building.
approve it today, we would move forward with purchasing the Center Point Building.
There was a purchase and sale agreement that was included in your council packet during
There was a purchase and sale agreement that was included in your council packet during
Julie's presentation back on October 1st.
Julie's presentation back on October 1st.
What you have in your packet now shows the changes that were made from the version that
What you have in your packet now shows the changes that were made from the version that
was in your October 1st packets to the version that is in today.
was in your October 1st packets to the version that is in today.
And those revisions I will go through kind of very briefly and explain kind of why they
And those revisions I will go through kind of very briefly and explain kind of why they
were made.
were made.
So I want to hit through some of the high points, which are also in your summary statement,
So I want to hit through some of the high points, which are also in your summary statement,
that I don't want to repeat verbatim, but just want to summarize very briefly the kind
that I don't want to repeat verbatim, but just want to summarize very briefly the kind
of what the agreement would provide for.
of what the agreement would provide for.
So, one, the city would agree to purchase the property for $11,250,000.
So, one, the city would agree to purchase the property for $11,250,000.
That is a reduction from the listing price of $14,200, or excuse me, $14,200,000.
That is a reduction from the listing price of $14,200, or excuse me, $14,200,000. And that is based on, from the thorough inspections that the Parks Department had
And that is based on, from the thorough inspections that the Parks Department had completed
completed about some of the things with the building that need to be replaced, and that
about some of the things with the building that need to be replaced, and that will have
will have to do shortly thereafter, after acquiring the property, if that is something
to do shortly thereafter, after acquiring the property, if that is something that you
that you were to authorize today.
were to authorize today. Once the agreement was signed by both the city and BECU, we were obligated to transmit
Once the agreement was signed by both the city and BECU, we were obligated to transmit
$150,000 in earnest money.
$150,000 in earnest money.
That earnest money has been sent over to the escrow agent in accordance with the agreement.
That earnest money has been sent over to the escrow agent in accordance with the agreement.
If, for some reason, council were not to approve the agreement, then the agreement
If, for some reason, council were not to approve the agreement, then the agreement
would provide how that earnest money would be returned back to the city.
would provide how that earnest money would be returned back to the city.
But in transmitting that over, it was wired over to escrow today.
But in transmitting that over, it was wired over to escrow today.
If the city does move forward with purchasing the property, that $150,000 would be credited
If the city does move forward with purchasing the property, that $150,000 would be credited
to the purchase price.
to the purchase price.
The purchase includes not only the building and the land, but everything that's within
The purchase includes not only the building and the land, but everything that's within
it.
it.
And so, inside that building, as you may have seen, I think on some of you went through
And so, inside that building, as you may have seen, I think on some of you went through
tours, that there's furniture there, there's equipment, other mechanical equipment, all
tours, that there's furniture there, there's equipment, other mechanical equipment, all
of that will transfer over to the city with the purchase of the building as well.
of that will transfer over to the city with the purchase of the building as well.
The city would be purchasing the property as-is.
The city would be purchasing the property as-is, and that "as-is" purchase is because
And that "as-is" purchase is because of the thorough and complete inspection that was
of the thorough and complete inspection that was done of the building, the facility, the
done of the building, the facility, the land, so we have a solid idea of what we're getting
land, so we have a solid idea of what we're getting ourselves into.
ourselves into. As there is with any other purchase, you know, once you start peeling down walls, there
As there is with any other purchase, you know, once you start peeling down walls, there
could be the chance that there are other things that are observed.
could be the chance that there are other things that are observed.
But we had very comprehensive inspections of the roof system, so we know what's happening
But we had very comprehensive inspections of the roof system, so we know what's happening
there, the mechanical and other equipment there, that's at end-of-life.
there, the mechanical and other equipment there, that's at end-of-life.
We've already obtained some cost estimates to replace it, and so that, all of that was
We've already obtained some cost estimates to replace it, and so that, all of that was
considered in arriving at the ultimate purchase price as well.
considered in arriving at the ultimate purchase price as well.
BECU agrees to reimburse the city up to $100,000 if we get in there and we determine there
BECU agrees to reimburse the city up to $100,000 if we get in there and we determine there
is some equipment or furniture that we don't want.
is some equipment or furniture that we don't want.
They don't want to have to come back and deal with it, so they've agreed to give us
They don't want to have to come back and deal with it, so they've agreed to give us
up to $100,000 to reimburse us to deal with any of that equipment that is surplus to
up to $100,000 to reimburse us to deal with any of that equipment that is surplus to
our needs.
our needs.
If you were to approve the agreement today, then closing would occur 30 days from today.
If you were to approve the agreement today, then closing would occur 30 days from today.
So as of November 7th, closing could happen, and the property would be ours as of that
So as of November 7th, closing could happen, and the property would be ours as of that
date.
date.
The changes that were made to the agreement, and they are highlighted for you and also
The changes that were made to the agreement, and they are highlighted for you and also
noted in red text, they are just in furtherance of the fact that we are buying this property
noted in red text, they are just in furtherance of the fact that we are buying this property
as-is.
as-is.
If we were condemning to buy this property through a court action, we would be buying
If we were condemning to buy this property through a court action, we would be buying
it as-is as well.
it as-is as well.
This property truly was a unicorn when Parks was out there looking as to what could we
This property truly was a unicorn when Parks was out there looking as to what could we
find existing that fits the city.
find existing that fits the city.
This is one, both size for square footage of the building, but as well as the number
This is one, both size for square footage of the building, but as well as the number
of parking stalls that was able to accommodate us, truly was a unicorn.
of parking stalls that was able to accommodate us, truly was a unicorn. We had talked with BECU through this process that the city would utilize condemnation
We had talked with BECU through this process that the city would utilize condemnation efforts
efforts if it needed to, to acquire this property, given its unique position to deal
if it needed to, to acquire this property, given its unique position to deal with our
with our staff and accommodate all of us.
staff and accommodate all of us. So you will notice in the motion here, what it proposes is that it is purchased under
So you will notice in the motion here, what it proposes is that it is purchased under
threat of condemnation.
threat of condemnation.
We've discussed that with BECU.
We've discussed that with BECU.
There are real estate excise tax implications associated with that, so that's why that
There are real estate excise tax implications associated with that, so that's why that
text is particularly there in the motion for you as well.
text is particularly there in the motion for you as well.
So if there's any questions on the agreement itself or on the transaction, I'm happy to
So if there's any questions on the agreement itself or on the transaction, I'm happy to
answer those.
answer those.
All right, any questions for Tammy? All right, any questions for Tammy? All right. All right. Then a motion would be in order to approve the purchase of the property located at 2061068 Then a motion would be in order to approve the purchase of the property located at 2061068 Avenue South. Avenue South.
May I move to approve the purchase of property located at 2061068 Avenue South May I move to approve the purchase of property located at 2061068 Avenue South in the city of Kent, under the threat of condemnation, and the terms of the purchase in the city of Kent, under the threat of condemnation, and the terms of the purchase and sale agreement signed by the mayor on October 3, 2024? and sale agreement signed by the mayor on October 3, 2024?
Second. Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Boyce? Councilmember Boyce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say that, you know, it's a privilege to be on this council. First of all, I want to say that, you know, it's a privilege to be on this council. The time goes on, there's tough decisions we have to make, you know, and then you look The time goes on, there's tough decisions we have to make, you know, and then you look out in the future, you turn out to be the right decision. out in the future, you turn out to be the right decision. You know, the first one, think about the general fund. You know, the first one, think about the general fund. When I first came on the council, we had makes a lot of decisions to be able to make When I first came on the council, we had makes a lot of decisions to be able to make sure we have enough fund in the general funds. sure we have enough fund in the general funds. I think about the golf course, you know, tough decision on the nine hole. I think about the golf course, you know, tough decision on the nine hole. It turned out the golf course is a very viable today, the financial cliff that we have to It turned out the golf course is a very viable today, the financial cliff that we have to deal with. deal with. And I just want to say, you know, when I think about our finance department, the leadership And I just want to say, you know, when I think about our finance department, the leadership team back in the back, CEO, and of course Tammy and you, really, I mean, I think this team back in the back, CEO, and of course Tammy and you, really, I mean, I think this is a joint decision that, you know, that we are able and capable of make. is a joint decision that, you know, that we are able and capable of make. You know, you look at other cities who are going through serious financial problem today, You know, you look at other cities who are going through serious financial problem today, and also cities who are struggling to find a building, right? and also cities who are struggling to find a building, right? I think it's really tough, so this is something I think is definitely one of the things we'll I think it's really tough, so this is something I think is definitely one of the things we'll look at, you know, eight, nine years down the road, and say, hey, we did the best thing look at, you know, eight, nine years down the road, and say, hey, we did the best thing for the city, we did the best thing for our citizens. for the city, we did the best thing for our citizens. So I'll definitely be supporting this area, and once again, just want to thank the leadership So I'll definitely be supporting this area, and once again, just want to thank the leadership team and all of you for really just kind of, as we as councilmen, also kind of guide through team and all of you for really just kind of, as we as councilmen, also kind of guide through this area and work our way through it. this area and work our way through it. So just kudos to everybody, one big team, and great job. So just kudos to everybody, one big team, and great job. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Council President? Council President?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as Tammy mentioned, this is truly a unicorn that we found. And as Tammy mentioned, this is truly a unicorn that we found. I think I am very pleased with the purchase of this building, so I'll be supporting that I think I am very pleased with the purchase of this building, so I'll be supporting that because I know, I've seen the, I've been here for over 10 years, working in different because I know, I've seen the, I've been here for over 10 years, working in different roles roles and elected. and elected. This building is not a very safe place for employees to be in or for anyone, so it's This building is not a very safe place for employees to be in or for anyone, so it's definitely a great need, and we've seen our neighboring cities, city of Redmond and other definitely a great need, and we've seen our neighboring cities, city of Redmond and other places who have built new buildings. places who have built new buildings. I think this is a really good choice, and I think kudos to all of our team members I think this is a really good choice, and I think kudos to all of our team members involved, our leadership, Parks, ECD, and Finance, and everyone else who's been engaged involved, our leadership, Parks, ECD, and Finance, and everyone else who's been engaged in this, who have done a great job finding this location and going through with the process. in this, who have done a great job finding this location and going through with the process. So kudos, congratulations to you for doing this work on behalf of all our employees. So kudos, congratulations to you for doing this work on behalf of all our employees. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Fincher? Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate for anyone who was not privy to the previous meetings or I just wanted to reiterate for anyone who was not privy to the previous meetings or didn't hear Julie Perescondola, our Parks Director's, report to us. didn't hear Julie Perescondola, our Parks Director's, report to us. Councilmember Michaux had raised a very good question, even though we knew the answer, Councilmember Michaux had raised a very good question, even though we knew the answer, for people in the public who were, might be wondering, why don't they use that money for people in the public who were, might be wondering, why don't they use that money for police officers? for police officers? They're not able, you know, they're asking us for money for police officers, why don't They're not able, you know, they're asking us for money for police officers, why don't they do that instead of buying this building? they do that instead of buying this building? Two different pots of money, so we cannot use this money because it's one-time. Two different pots of money, so we cannot use this money because it's one-time. We get to use capital funds for a one-time expense, not for ongoing expenses. We get to use capital funds for a one-time expense, not for ongoing expenses. So as the mayor put it, if we wanted to give them one paycheck, just a single paycheck, So as the mayor put it, if we wanted to give them one paycheck, just a single paycheck, that would work, otherwise, no. that would work, otherwise, no. So just wanted to clarify that. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Troutner? Councilmember Troutner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to kind of tag on to what my colleagues have said, we have been having this discussion Just to kind of tag on to what my colleagues have said, we have been having this discussion for quite some time. for quite some time. We came to this decision, it may seem, very quickly, but we've been talking about this We came to this decision, it may seem, very quickly, but we've been talking about this building and the need for finding a space that's going to work for everybody, and this building and the need for finding a space that's going to work for everybody, and this just happened to come along. just happened to come along. It happened very quickly, but I want to thank all the people that worked with council It happened very quickly, but I want to thank all the people that worked with council to give us the tours, to make sure questions were answered, and I will be supporting this to give us the tours, to make sure questions were answered, and I will be supporting this tonight. tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. All right. Any additional comments? Any additional comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Motion carries 6-0. Council, I cannot thank you enough for taking this vote tonight. Council, I cannot thank you enough for taking this vote tonight. Many city employees that are also out there saying thank you. Many city employees that are also out there saying thank you. This means we are setting the city up to provide service. This means we are setting the city up to provide service. Between Quahog and this purchase and the transition, we're setting our city up to provide Between Quahog and this purchase and the transition, we're setting our city up to provide the service that our residents need for the next 50 years. the service that our residents need for the next 50 years. Not very often in our career as electeds do we get to make those kinds of decisions, Not very often in our career as electeds do we get to make those kinds of decisions, have the honor of being, of that hard decision being in front of us. have the honor of being, of that hard decision being in front of us. I am grateful for all of you, for the questions, for the engagement, the involvement, and I am grateful for all of you, for the questions, for the engagement, the involvement, and the willingness to figure this out as we've walked through all of the different opportunities, the willingness to figure this out as we've walked through all of the different opportunities, possibilities, and come to this place tonight. possibilities, and come to this place tonight. So thank you all very, very much. So thank you all very, very much. With, I think that's worth, I think so. With, I think that's worth, I think so. I think it's a big, a big place. I think it's a big, a big place. Council President, I know that you had a conversation with Councilmember Boyd. Council President, I know that you had a conversation with Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. He is unfortunately not able to join us today, and he did mention to me that he's in support He is unfortunately not able to join us today, and he did mention to me that he's in support of this as well, so he's not able to vote by proxy, but he is very supportive of this of this as well, so he's not able to vote by proxy, but he is very supportive of this decision because he understands the need of our city and our employees, and he's, you decision because he understands the need of our city and our employees, and he's, you know, been through the presentations and understands that we do need a bigger space. know, been through the presentations and understands that we do need a bigger space. Our city is growing, our number of employees are growing, we have constraints on space, Our city is growing, our number of employees are growing, we have constraints on space, and also safety, so that was my conversation with him, so I'm sure if he's watching. and also safety, so that was my conversation with him, so I'm sure if he's watching. Thank you, Councilmember Boyd, for your comments. Thank you, Councilmember Boyd, for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Council, with that, we are at the end of our agenda for the special meeting. Council, with that, we are at the end of our agenda for the special meeting. We will adjourn this meeting and at 5:15 roll into our council workshop on budget and We will adjourn this meeting and at 5:15 roll into our council workshop on budget and comprehensive plan. comprehensive plan. So with that, we are adjourned. So with that, we are adjourned.
Good afternoon, welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, October 8, 2024. We have two items on our agenda. First, we have 2025-2026 biennial budget and we have Finance Director Paula Painter here. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Council President Corr, Mayor Ralph, and members of City Council. We are now at our third budget workshop on the 2025-26 budget. This time around, we're going to just focus on the questions that have come in so far related to the budget, and then if there's more discussion that needs to be had along the way, we can have that while we're walking through these. And then again, at the end of this, we'll talk about the timeline that you guys have seen several times already. So the first question that we had is why are the parking penalties increasing so significantly? And when you look at the budget, for 2025, we have an $85,000 budget for parking penalties, and you'd see that it jumped to a budget of about $216,000. If you go back to 2019, you can see what our monthly average for parking enforcement revenues were, and back in 2019, it was about $100,000 a year. And then, right now, in 2023, it's $69,600 a year. And so, at the end, in 2019, there was a position approved for parking enforcement. That position was finally filled at the end of 2023, so now what we're seeing is a significant increase in those revenues. We had dropped the revenue in 2024, down to $85,000 for revenue, but as of August 2000, as of August this year, year-to-date, we've brought in about $164,000 in revenue. If we have, if we continue this trend, we would have the potential of bringing in about $244,000 for the year. I'm not sure that we're really going to keep there because we are starting to see some declines in that. I think people are realizing that we're enforcing these revenues, so we are starting to see a little bit more of a decline in that. So we were budgeting about an average of $18,000 per month, which is less than what we're getting in right now, per average, in 2024. So that's the big difference that you're seeing there with those revenues. Question two, is there a set amount of BNO that goes to parks capital? And will the proposed increase in the BNO taxes impact those parks' allocation? Back in November of 2022, when we were approving the 2023-24 biennial budget, we had actually changed a couple of things related to that. For one, we took BNO tax and moved all of that to the general fund, and it would stay within the general fund. And we took 52.5% of our property tax and allocated that to our capital program. So as part of the ordinance, what we did, all restrictions on BNO tax went away, so there's no tie anymore to those direct streams. It's all on property tax. And in 2023, between IT parks and public works, we had 16, or excuse me, $12.65 million that were allocated to their capital programs, and those were increased each year by 2% according to the ordinance that we have that governs our property tax. So the BNO tax, in short, won't have any impact on our parks' allocation. I was expecting to get a question about this because most people are most attentive to what's going on within their own divisions and departments and budgets, and why is the council budget increasing by so much? So I thought it would be good just to walk you through some of the changes that are going on with the council budget. First off, oh, and also that the increase isn't shown on page 107. I'm going to apologize now. There's an error on page 107. And I do have a printed version of a new page 107 for you, and I do apologize, but I left them in my office. So we'll have to wait till the next time I see you next week, and I'll give you those updated pages. First off, you're going to see a decline in salaries and benefits, and the reason for the decline primarily has to change, do with the change of the admin assistant that's supporting the city council. Every position, whether they get, depending on where they get hired, in at, on the range of pay, as well as the benefits that they select, can impact that. That's primarily what you're seeing, is the reduction in the salaries and benefits. We apply a 2% increase to supplies and services, and so that was a $500 increase there. The largest part of the increase that you're going to end up seeing has to do with these internal cost allocations, and these are really hard to predict year-to-year, which is why we're always doing modifications, and it does kind of goof with things just a little bit. With the IT allocation, you do see a $38,000 increase, and there's a couple of reasons for that. First off, the smaller reason is we continue to see declines in utility tax revenue. So utility tax revenue supports our IT department, or excuse me, our cable utility tax revenue and all of that, just the cable utility tax. We're seeing declines in that, so they don't have as much outside revenue coming in to offset their costs, so they have to allocate them out to the department. So that's part of what you're seeing there. The other part that you're seeing is the rise of costs just to doing business. We all know we've seen pretty good changes in cost of personnel, maintenance, and subscriptions. I think we talked about that a little bit in one of our other workshops, how those continue to rise greatly. And then there was a change in methodology, which came to how IT is allocating out portions of their items. It used to be that they would allocate on FTE. Well, council is not a full-time FTE, it's a part-time FTE. Well, now they do it based on person, because a person needs help, whether they're full-time or part-time, they still need that assistance to make their technology work. So they did change that methodology, which did change the allocation for the IT as well. You'll notice the multimedia increased by $10,000 compared to the year before. That has to do with a couple of factors. First off, during one of the last workshops, I did talk about the fact that we did move a multimedia employee who's been getting paid out of the general fund to multimedia because really, they should be charged to multimedia and allocated out with the rest of the budget. So that was a cost that was getting absorbed by the general fund, which shouldn't have really had been there. So that is part of the increase you're seeing there. And then also, multimedia attracts all of its uses, so depending on how, what percentage of the pie you are compared to everybody else, you have to pay more or less of that pie to, in order to make their budget work, because that's how internal cost allocations work. And then finally, other, there's a, you know, $1,100 worth of other increases that's related to things like facilities cost allocation and liability insurance allocation. Any questions on that before I move on to question number four? All right, this is where you're going to get an opportunity to not have to listen to me, and I'm going to call on our Public Works Director to come up and speak on this. And the question is, can the floodplain engineer be fully funded by the drainage fund, and why not? So I'll let him address that.
Thanks, Paula. This is an item that I've been working on with Kurt, and in actuality, there's regulation regarding this drainage-funded position. Most of the requirements for the position are related to floodplain regulation, so it comes out of the general fund component, but there's a drainage component that's related to the National Flood Insurance Program and trying to get, it's called the Community Rating System, or Reduction in Flood Insurance, which equates to about 20% of the position's time. So that, that part of it will be charged to drainage, the other 80% of it will be charged to permit fees.
All right, thank you very much, Chad. Okay, so question number five, what is the New Connections parking lot? That is referenced on page 37 of the budget book, and ultimately, it is the building and lot that is right across the street from the police station, so it's right across Titus. And so, let me see, oops, let me see if I can make this, oh, I can make this work. So there's the police department, there's our parking garage, and there is your new, that New Connections lot there. And that New Connections lot is part of the facilities division, and they're responsible for the parks' NPDES requirements to be able to ensure that we're meeting the stormwater NPDES requirement, so they're having to do work there. So there's dollars that are set aside for them to be able to do the work necessary for that. Okay, where exactly, and by the way, budget books pages are referenced, if you hadn't noticed that, at the top of these, wherever it's applicable, but where exactly is the general fund balance of 1.3 million and 3.2 million going? Are these the major expenditure changes? And so, I'm going to kind of walk you through this. So ultimately, the question is, okay, so we're eating into the general fund fund balance by these dollar amounts, what, why is that happening? What's making this up? So what I want to do is I want to kind of walk you through what's getting us there and explain it to you. At the end of the day, it's mostly our baseline budget adjustments that are getting us there, things like colas we have to put into the budget. But let me walk you through, let's just look at the 2025 proposed budget. If you look at the revenues, the first line there says prior year budget, $121 million. If we drop down to the expenditure line and look at the prior year budget, we're at $123 million. So right there, we're already eating into fund balance before we do anything. Then we have baseline adjustments, and the baseline adjustments are looking at, for revenues, increases of $1.6 million, and this is just taking current programs, looking at our revenues, making adjustments as appropriate. The same thing goes down with our expenditure side of the house. You see baseline adjustments of $2.6 million, and that's making up all of the colas, all of the adjustments on all of those internal allocations, the 2% for supplies and services, and then any other contractual agreements that we had that were affecting those baseline Then going into, and I'm bouncing back and forth, going into, okay, but what's changed? Well, we had a scheduled BNO tax change that was, that will be generating $3 million. That was on our square footage. That one was approved back in 2018. And then we have proposed changes. $931,000 of that are the proposed BNO tax changes, which is adjusting the cap on our retailing grocery receipts and also changing the manufacturing grocery receipts tax. And then below, you're going to see proposed changes, and a person like me says, well, why is the proposed changes longer than the proposed, in expenditures, more than the proposed revenues? Well, there's several different things that run into this, and so I'll kind of walk you through some of them. When we, with the 2024 budget, we do have some programs that are, that are in that budget that were not slated to carry forward, that we know we have to have money for. For example, Parks NPDES, our senior center program coordinator, the encampment cleanup, we still need additional dollars to make sure we can handle those encampment cleanups. Contracted security services, that was a pilot program that existed in the Parks Department to close down our parks, to keep them from keeping people out of those parks at night. Workday consulting and training, that was something that was in our budget this year, and it needs to continue again for next year. And then we had economic and community development, they had a TLT position that has moved, continued on moving forward. So when you start looking at those, those are not new things, these are things that we were doing in 2004 that we can't do, 2024 that we cannot do without. In addition, there's $150,000 for our race and equity coordinator that is paid for with ARPA. This is one of those things that can be continued forward with ARPA funding through 2026, so that is, was added in the budget as well. With the BNO tax increase, we did have, the BNO tax increase covered our public safety and additional public safety costs that were there. Our Economic and Community Development Group, their permit revenue cannot be used to subsidize the general fund's costs for anything other than the permit center. And what was happening is the permit center was bringing in more revenue than they were expending, so this budget includes dollars to make sure that we are matching those revenues with expenditures, because we cannot be using those for other, other purposes. So that's why you'll see that increased in expense where you wouldn't necessarily have a revenue to match, to go with it. And then finally, when we do our cost allocations, we do provide, the general fund does provide subsidy for the street fund, and so that did increase, and same with the IT maintenance and subscriptions and the facilities extension of their TLT for their project manager, that was extended as well. All of those touch the general fund, so those were some of these things that are there. But at the end of the day, you do see, we do tap into that fund balance of 1.3 million. When you look at the proposed changes that are under the expenditures there, you can go to page 42 of your budget book, and I think it's actually 41 and 42, 40 and 41, excuse me, of your budget book, and it'll give you a list of all of the different things that made up those numbers, and those fell into each of these little buckets that I just went through with you to kind of explain that. Any questions on this part of it? All right. So where can I find information on the human services per capita revenue, and what is the per capita rate? The page that was referenced was page 119 of the book, and I think this is just where the question rose. Page 119 of the book is the Human Services Fund, but what you're really looking at there is the sales tax revenue that was generated by House Bill 1406 and 1590. When it comes to the human services per capita revenue, you're not going to be able to find that line item separate in the book itself. It's actually rolled into the Health and Human Services line item altogether, so it's a little bit more of that. But I thought I would at least walk you through the budget and how much is allocated there. For 2024, if you look in that middle column that says updated base, you'll see what the rate was for this year, which is $8.96. I'm going to round because that's easier. And we, we start, when we go into 2025, we start with that rate. So you'll see the base rate in column two there, $8.96. We apply CPI, CPI is capped at 3%. So CPI for 2025 is 3.6%, so we have that 3% cap. Updated base rate is $9.23. We multiply that by population, which gives us nearly $1.3 million for allowable spending. In 2026, we do again start with that updated base amount. We have been using 2.5 as an estimate for CPI, we really don't know what it's going to be, giving us a rate of $9.46, multiplied by, again, an estimated population, because we have no idea. And so, giving us another $1.3 million budget for 2026. The 2026 number will be updated with the mid-biennial budget adjustment, once we actually do have those real numbers. Any questions on that? All right. Is the Spotlight Series not self-sustaining? So as you know, we added $55,000 to the budget for the Spotlight program. Whether it was self-sustaining or not, we would have to have it in the budget, but unfortunately, this program is not fully self-sustaining. What I can say about this is that it does have a pretty high recovery rate, about 85% to 100%, depending on what their lineups are. We do offer discounts for seniors and also for young adults, so ages 25 and less, so that, yes, that is subsidized by the general fund. But ultimately, what they have found is that they're seeing the cost of being able to keep these performances going, continuing to escalate. The artistic fees, traveling, and the food for performer hospitality have raised sharply, as I think we all can kind of relate to that. In addition to that, Kent Parks is obligated to pay performing rights organizations licensing fees in order to be, in order to use their music, and this is for both live performances in the cultural arts program and also parks and city events. And those fees have significantly increased, and instead of having two organizations to pay, they now have four. So that is the update I have on that. Any questions there? Hi, Chad. I'm going to call Chad up to join me with this one as well, is what happened to the Veterans Drive project from last budget?
Thanks, Paula. It is still happening. We have purchased banners, we're going to put banners on the luminaires going up and down Veterans Drive, and then refreshing the signs at the bottom and top of the roadway, as well as doing some roadway cleanup. If you remember when we came up with the original concept, we talked about doing some different plantings in there, because we looked more into the cost of that and included a lot of system development charges through Highland Water District that would have taken up a lot of the budget, so we backed away from that and then took a look at a different way we could refresh the entire corridor, and these banners and signage look like a good alternative to those pretty significant costs related to the water development charges and the uses. So that'll be coming in about a month.
All right. Thank you very much, Chad. And then, number 10, are we continuing the street litter cleanup program? And yes, we are. There's actually two different programs that we have going right now. We have the Litter Strike Program that was funded in 2022, and the ARPA-funded program that is going to be going through 2026. The Litter Strike Program was funded with $1.25 million in 2022, and then in 20, with the 2023-2024 budget, we had an additional $397,000 that was added to that budget, for a total of nearly $1.65 million. Through August of 2024, we have spent $625,000. That leaves another $1 million remaining in the Litter Strike Program. At the rate that we're spending the money so far, that should last us another four years, and of course, that's a ballpark-ish, we'll just kind of see how things continue to go moving forward. The other trash and litter cleanup was funded with $1 million of ARPA funding, starting in 2023, and $250,000 was paid to King County for the uplift program, and that lasted for a year. There was a new contract that was signed with Totum Logistics for $760,000 for the right-of-way litter removal and disposal of general garbage and other waste along city-owned right-of-way routes. This contract will go through 2026. Are we still providing funding for the Lake Meridian 4th of July fireworks display? Yes, we are. And this time, I'm going to call on the chief to come up and answer this question for me. Does the King County Prosecutor's announcement that they will not accept AI-assisted reports have any impact on the program council just approved for the BWV transcription services?
Hi, good evening. Great question. Let me get the answer first, and I'll give the explanation. The short answer is, in the short term, no, but we've got a lot of work to get through before we can use this for prosecution of individuals. Before the letter from Dan Clark, Chief Deputy Prosecutor for King County, came out, we are already well aware that there are some challenges. The plan was not to implement this for prosecution right away until we worked it through, and our stance is to sit here until Tammy White signs off on accepting these. They're not going to occur here, and I'm working on her every day, but she's pretty tough. That said, I want to, so I've done a couple of things already, I've already called Dan Clark, I called him the day we got the letter. He will, and this is for public consumption, he knows that at some point, the technology is going to be something that all industries are using to some degree, including law enforcement and prosecution. His concerns are valid, they're no different than the concerns that were raised in the city, so we're paying full attention to that, we're taking them seriously. That said, I want to assure the council that even if the worst-case scenario would happen, and I don't think it would, and that we never use this technology for prosecution, the value and the workplace efficiency to use it to drive police reports that are not going to be used for things of that nature through our e-reporting and through non-critical reports, say like lost property, or even cases of theft that we know absolutely we're closing the case, but somebody needs the information, accidents where they need the information for their insurance, we're not going to be prosecuting. We see the efficiencies and the potential and savings of time for our officers as still a huge value for moving forward, even if we never use the cases for prosecution. Lastly, to make sure we're being responsible, I want to remind, refresh everybody's memory that in our proposal, the way that we acquired this add-on to our suite of software from Axon was that we got discounted prices in other categories, so we didn't pull, we didn't pay full freight to get this technology. But we felt it was important enough to be an early adapter, because in Kent, we're super lean, and I'm looking for every way to maximize the resources we have. So that's why we decided to move forward, and appreciate the support. Okay.
Thank you, chief. All right. How much additional revenue would we receive if the BNO retailing grocery receipts cap was $25 million and $100 million? Last week when we met, I presented these scenarios to you, scenarios A through D, with a potential revenue. Item B is included in the budget in front of you today. Item E is new to this list, so if the minimum, or excuse me, the maximum retailing grocery receipts tax moved to 25 million, and a company hit $100 million in gross retailing receipts, they would be taxable on everything. If it was just 25, if they were less than 100 million, they'd only be taxed on the 25 million, if they reach 100 million, they'll be taxed on it all. That would generate an additional $370,000 above the 2024 numbers that we have. So looking at all of these options, excuse me, did I say 370? I hope I did, yeah, all right. Looking at these options, we have option B, which is in the budget at the $86,800, option D at $300,000, and option E at $370,000.
Councilwoman Trotner.
Thank you, Madam President. So going back to this, and that 100 million really only affects those big retail stores.
Those big national retail stores, yes.
And then I thought, when we discussed this last meeting, we kind of all were thinking that E sounded okay. Was that?
It was D.
It was D?
Because I didn't.
I'm sorry, it was D. Oh, okay, we didn't look at E, okay, all right.
Yes. So what moves on from that question? Oh, go ahead.
So then I was going to ask, when you look at, when you look at that option, that maximum, some of our businesses, that will affect them a little bit, and that's where, I don't know.
That's one thing to keep in mind, the difference between option D and option E The difference between option D and option E is that option E is going to impact probably sixteen-ish businesses that are kind of right now on this borderline, where the twenty million max does benefit them. So you'll have the potential of impacting more companies by moving from D to E.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's seventy thousand more, but I just, I don't know, there, I'm concerned about those sixteen, affecting those sixteen businesses with that higher increase.
Councilmember Boyes, followed by Michelle, and Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Madam President. I think item E was something that Councilmember Michelle was asking to bring forward, and so I mean, I'm not a big task guy, and I think, you know, you can go from zero to one hundred right away, or you can go from zero to eighty. I feel more comfortable with the D, right? You know, because there are, I mean, the companies are going to be impacted no matter what, right? So just to me, I wouldn't prefer swatting the whole elephant at one time, you know, but, you know, I am open, but my option right now would be going with option D.
Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Madam President. So the proposed one was B, which would have raised it up to twenty-five million, because we have kept it at twenty million for so long, and we have not applied the annual increases. So E really is just a combination of B, because we are already going to put it up to twenty-five, so that just includes that portion of B. And then the second part of that is those big, huge companies.
Councilmember Larmour, please.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, and I just, I recall from our previous conversation, too, that many of our neighbors do not apply any caps at all.
That's correct.
And so, you know, the fact that we actually apply any sort of arbitrary cap is a little strange to me, so, and the fact that it is impacting only the largest businesses in the community, the large national chains, I support E. I think that makes a lot of sense.
And just for a point of clarification, the hundred million is the one that impacts the, those bigger, more corp, bigger corporations? The twenty million does get some of the smaller entities, so just so you know.
Councilmember Michelle, please.
Okay, but Paula, with the proposed budget, B.
Yes.
That would have impacted those same sixteen, and that was what was proposed?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Any other comments? Do you have a preference, Councilmember Fincher?
They've already known that the twenty, they were already expecting the twenty-five.
All right. Councilmember Trottner, please.
Well, and I know we did a kind of, B was in the budget, but now, when we can look at option D and kind of consider how, I'd like to have a little bit more information on, and I know you can't specifically tell us, but some of those businesses, because it still is an increase, if we keep it at twenty and go to a hundred million, I'd like to kind of have an idea of those businesses that we would be affecting. And I know you can't specifically say it, but I'm a little bit sensitive. I spoke, I don't know.
So I think there's a, there's a clarification, just kind of a point here. Mayor Ralph presented the budget with option B, which was raising the maximum cap to twenty-five million. So if we had done nothing, we were raising that cap to twenty-five million. Now with the option of D and E, it feels very different, but it really, I mean, looking at what we were proposing and what we're getting, I would go with option E, but that's my vote, so we're not really voting here, but that's what I prefer.
Yeah. I'm hooked on D, but I can be talked into E, but I just think, just going from one extreme to the next, I think we have to be careful how we go from point A to point B, so.
Any other comments or questions? Oh, Councilmember Trottner, please.
And I think, I don't know, maybe to not give much detail, but how it would affect those businesses, those, you know, handful of businesses to go from twenty to twenty-five, what would that, how would that affect those businesses in particular?
Five thousand dollars a year.
Per business, per?
Business.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right, you made it easy, okay. Only, you were holding information, it would have been easier if you had said it earlier. I'm okay with E, team.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Boyes. Any other comments? Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, I was trying to do that on my calculator, and I couldn't figure out. Thankfully, you did that, so yes, I agree with, because I was kind of on the edge, too, but now I agree with Councilmember Boyes, E.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Moving on.
All right. So to follow up on this question is, can we use BNO revenues to fund police officer positions? If so, can we use the additional BNO tax funds generated by the change in the grocery seedings tax to hire one or two additional officers? And so what I can say, the cost right now would be about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year, per officer, and that would be for the first year, assuming that they're hired mid-range. You need to assume, though, that that amount goes up each year until they hit the top step, which would be a couple of years, maybe look at additional twenty thousand dollars at that top step per year. And then they would need a vehicle, and that vehicle would typically is funded out of the school zone cameras, and so what that would mean is, if there were any officers, we do have vehicles in the budget right now, but we can't afford to add more vehicles to it, so it would just mean the car per officer program would be slowed a little bit So that is the information that I have on that.
Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you. About that hundred ninety dollars, is that just all of the benefits salaries, or does that also include gear?
Gear, it includes everything, all the supplies that they would need, as well as their salaries and benefits.
Any other comments, questions?
I support this. I propose this, so I know it's just one officer, but we need, until we can get a real solution, we need as many officers as we can get. If we're going to increase BNO, why not use it for officers?
Councilmember Trottner, please.
So you're saying use additional BNO revenue, so then what, does that take away from some other, we have to figure out where that comes from?
Well, right now, we have eighty-six thousand dollars in the retailing cap as part of our budget. If we go to I, to C, or, excuse me, E, option E, that would give two hundred and ninety thousand dollars more revenue than we have in the proposed budget. Ideally, that, I, originally, this was presented with an idea of putting it towards fund balance to be able to offset some of that structural imbalance, and now there's the proposal of bringing it forward to look at it for a potential officer, which is what we did do to fund, we used BNO tax to fund the new officers that we've, we've added thus far.
Councilmember Larmour, followed by Councilmember Boyes.
Actually, I'll re- send my comment.
Oh, Councilmember Boyes, please.
Yeah, the additional funding, we have, biggest supporter of police there is, right? Going to record saying that, but I think with so many unknown coming in front of us with the structural imbalance and so on, I just, I just think we just need to kind of maybe just hold off a little bit, as we can see where things are going to go, because we got another semi-five hundred cliff, right, that we need to figure out how we're going to solve. And to take that extra dollars and average two police officers would be good, but I think in the long term, I just think there's too many unknown for us as a council, but the, another cliff coming in front of us, so I will propose just leaving it as is.
Councilmember Fincher, followed by Councilmember Larmour.
I just wanted to add that I agree with that. We don't know what's coming, and, you know, we thought we were doing well a few years ago, and we're right back, basically almost in the same place.
Councilmember Larmour, please.
I just, you know, I'm, I'm torn, because I feel like, you know, at this time, we are not the sort of people we need, which is to the police force, and we know that's what our residents, our citizens on the streets. I would say if we're not, oh, you're my, oh, sorry. I would say if we're not going to put this towards an officer, I remember when I joined in two thousand eighteen, at that time, we were talking about small incremental increases in the police force, and I remember seeing a sheet of how we could add, you know, one to two to three officers per year over time. I would like us to, like, take a look at that and say, you know, what, what is a plan that we can add, you know, one to two head count a year, and approach it that way again, because I think that's, you know, that's where we're at.
So I think, I think you make a valid point, Councilmember Larmour. Initial proposed budget was eighty-six thousand coming from BNO. It's three seventy right now. So if we add one officer, we still have a hundred thousand more than the proposed, so we still have one eighty to go into the fund balance, and one ninety potentially for an officer, kind of just looking at that, but just, just to give you that information.
I want to go to the next question that came in as well, because I think all of these, I think this is, needs to be part of all of your conversation as well, when you're talking about this. The last question I have is, it says, I'm so glad to see the budget includes two new sergeants and one patrol officer. This does provide some help to the department, but we all know we need more officers. In the coming year, will, will it be a legislative priority to ask the state for additional funding for police? And just like we did with the last legislative session, we're going to continue to advocate for a change in the law, which would allow the city to be able to increase the sales tax by that three tenths of one percent, or find other mechanisms in order to fund that, to be able to get the twelve million dollars that we would really need for policing. I just throw this out because we're talking about police officers, and these were, this is kind of all in the same, just we might as well have it all.
Councilmember Larmour, please.
Yeah, I appreciate this conversation. I mean, obviously, this is what our priority needs to be, and we need to go after this again, but I think as we saw last session, we can't count on this, so I would still like us to see a plan of what we can do without this, to add one to, you know, one to two head count per budget again.
Councilmember Trottner.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Michelle and Councilmember Larmour. I do agree with Councilmember Boyes. I think we do have to be very careful, because we're looking at, if we were looking at putting this in the budget for next year, they were going to get, kind of going back to what the mayor always says, they're going to want to get paid year after year, and we don't know what that's going to add to the budget with all of these unknowns. It'd be nice to be able to have that, but I think we're trying to keep this status quo and trying to be very mindful of everybody's requests, and we are providing a few officers here, but I think, I do, I think we need to be very careful in this next year, and maybe revisit it in the next budget.
Councilmember Boyes, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, I just want to reiterate, right, there's a lot of unknown that we, that we don't know, right? We, a hundred thousand, three hundred eighty thousand, I mean, you got like the city to come, face the twenty-four million dollars budget fall, making tough decision, right? So I think this financing, really have been very conservative in our approach. I think that's the reason why we are in a very good position today, to be able to kind of sustain some of this storm in front of us, but once again, I just want to reiterate, you know, just, I know when I first came on the council, Councilmember Larmour, I think Madam Mayor was here, what they were putting economic, in our economic, economic development was to hire, I think it was two officer every year, right? And we, you was on the, on the safety committee as well, too. That's something we can maybe talk about, really, is just revisiting that, and that could be another way of trying to figure out how to do that, but I think for now, where we at, I just feel really comfortable, just kind of just being a little more conservative, and then, he was in front of us.
Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I do not feel good about raising the BNO up that significantly if we are not going to use it for police officers. I was disappointed when I, at first, when I saw that we were getting two new sergeants and one patrol officer, and I know that others in the community were too. That is until I talked to the expert at my house, and told me how sergeants are necessary, because I want more patrol officers, I want more officers out on the streets. So I do understand now why we need the new sergeants. But man, we are asking, now we're asking for significantly, almost three hundred thousand dollars more than what was proposed in the mayor's budget, and we're just going to store that away? No, we need an officer, so that I'm going to stand by that. I do not feel comfortable raising BNO this much if it's not going to go towards police.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Any other comments? Hey, I, go ahead, Councilmember Boyes, go ahead.
So what I'm hearing, Councilmember Michelle, you say either nothing at all, is what I'm hearing you say?
About what?
For the police officer. You say if it's not going towards BNO, then you're not going to support this, is that's what I hear? Just for clarification.
She's talking about the BNO tax. She's saying she would stick with option B then, instead of E.
Because originally, what was proposed was eighty, like adding eighty-six thousand to the, to the general fund balance. Now we're going to add three hundred and seventy to the general fund balance instead.
The original eighty-six thousand was actually going towards all of the public safety stuff, so that was all earmarked. None of that was originally going to fund balance, just as a point of clarification.
I think we need to have more discussion on this topic, and maybe we should also wait for Councilmember Boyd to join us, so we can, yeah, I have figured this out, where we stand, and we all understand the need in our community for public safety. I know that, all of us do, and also there is unknowns in the future, as we're seeing, and we will, we will work on this together, so, thank you, Paula.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so the timeline. October fifteenth, next week, that is the last workshop that we're planning to have on this budget, so obviously, this is going to be one of those topics for us to talk about, so we'll have that. What I'd like to know from you guys, too, is, is there anything else you want to make sure that we address next week before we get there, so we can be prepared to have those conversations with you, because we want to make sure that you have everything that you need for this budget, for us to be able to start working on our packet for the November fifth Committee of the Whole, which is where we'll be coming with the final documents for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So it'll be really important, if you do have questions, if you want clarification, if you need anything to be able to prepare us for that workshop, please reach out to us as soon as you, you can, or as soon as you know what your question is, so we can make sure that we have that information for you and arm you with all the information you need to make, make your decisions. Again, we're, we'll put everything together on November fifth. Those, that's going to be the packet that we will intend to move forward to the council meeting on December tenth for final approval, and we, we don't plan to make any changes before the fifth, or between the fifth and the tenth of December, so it'd be really great if we can work through any of that now. If really needed, we did have October twenty-second earmarked for a workshop, if that's going to end up being needed, but we do have, it looks like plenty of time for discussion next week at our next meeting. At the next workshop, we're also going to have Human Services, Marina Hansen here to give a presentation, probably about twenty or thirty minutes of that meeting will be hers. And then, again, send questions to Mayor Michelle. We'd be happy to get those logged and get data gathered for you for Tuesday next week. Anything else?
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Boyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Paula, I'm assuming next week, you're bringing new questions, and then we have some dialogues around this, so we talked about you, bring that back as well, too.
Yes, and right now, I don't have any, so we have all the questions that we have to date, so.
I think from a discussion perspective, from the BNO, I think we need to kind of maybe, talk about that once again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Paula.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next up, second item is two thousand forty-four Comprehensive Plan Update on Climate Element, and we have Krista Holsworth. You're welcome.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for letting me use the remainder of your time to get through this last element before our draft is released out to the public. So tonight, we'll be discussing some of the state requirements that we need to meet, not by this Comprehensive Plan Update, but at the midpoint check-in, which is in two thousand twenty-nine. So that's legislation that's happened over the last several years. We'll give a recap on that. We'll review our approach for adding in the first-ever climate element into Kent's Comprehensive review our approach for adding in the first ever climate element into Kent's comprehensive plan. And then we'll discuss how we're going to get from the release of our comprehensive plan and adoption in two thousand twenty-four through the two thousand twenty-nine timeframe. So state requirements, there was a law that you may hear me call HB eleven eighty-one. A new state law requires that jurisdictions must have climate elements. We, because the law was adopted last year, the state, there's a GMA rule that basically says if you have less than a year and a half to adopt something or two years, then it, it has to roll to the next periodic update. And so jurisdictions that are, have their comp plans due in two thousand twenty-five have to meet this requirement. Because ours are due, ours is due in two thousand twenty-four, we have until two thousand twenty-nine. So we actually bought ourselves a little bit of time, which I think if they had required us, all of our Western Washington cities to do that, I think all the planners would have resigned with all of the other state regulations we were also having to meet at the last, at the last minute. But a little bit of context of what's required in the state law, there's, it touches, actually, it's pretty extensive. It touches our transportation system as well. It requires using a multimodal level of service framework on that regard. We actually are ahead of the curve. Our TMP that was adopted back in two thousand twenty-one addresses this already. Really, what the specific planning requirements are as they relate to the comprehensive plan are for two efforts. One is resilience. And that's the idea of, we know that climate change impacts are happening. So that can manifest as extreme heat, poor air quality, wildfire smoke, flooding. And so the first part is resilience. So saying we can't stop flooding necessarily, but we can become more resilient. So we can do things to support infrastructure. We can do things to support people from the risks of climate change that is already going to happen and is happening. The second part is how do we stop this from getting worse down the road? And that's through greenhouse gas emissions reduction. So you may have heard all the scientists say, like, you know, we have to prevent this, the steep increase in temperature or GHG emissions, or else all the oceans are going to flood everything, all those types of things. All of that's driven by the idea of the, that human, human activities are causing a rapid increase in GHG emissions. The, the high-level summary, I talked about this in our CIPA EIS, there's actually very little that the city as a whole can do on greenhouse gas emissions reductions. And that's because the major causes are things like energy, gasoline, farm production, a lot of things that really, as a city, we don't directly regulate or control. And so the good and the bad news of that is me telling someone individually to reduce, turn off the lights, really doesn't have as much of an impact as the energy system as a whole is transitioning to cleaner energy that produces less greenhouse gases. And so when we look at this, we have been tracking our emissions already. But what we anticipate is all of our, our preferred growth alternatives will continue to decrease our greenhouse gas emissions as a city. So there's many different types of climate change planning. There's things like greenhouse gas, gas inventories, which is basically measuring to see where we're at and then creating plans and reduction strategies. We participate in K-4C, which is the King County and Cities Climate Collaborative. Gosh, so many acronyms. We have an inventory and we are in the process, we signed on through some of our member dues fees. We are updating our community-based inventory through this. Parks has also worked on some municipal inventories because they manage our buildings and our facilities. And there's state requirements for reducing energy use in buildings and making them more efficient as well. So we've done a lot of these topics. I'm going to explain kind of the different purposes of them. But it may not, it may come to surprise, I know it's a surprise to some of our community, that we've done a lot of this work. We haven't necessarily brought it under an umbrella. And so that's what this climate element is doing, is capturing and, and saying, here's the work we've done, and here's where we need to go to meet the other state requirements. Climate vulnerability assessments, this is thinking both in terms of what the climate impacts are. So again, flooding, heat, et cetera, and then also who is most affected. So someone who may be at risk of flooding, if they have access to a vehicle and can leave versus someone who may have mobility challenges and is not able to drive a vehicle, they have very different risks in that, in that realm. And so identifying vulnerability assessments, it can also apply to things like infrastructure, like our roads and bridges and, and other natural resources as well. Hazard mitigation planning, we work closely with Puget Sound Fire for our emergency management response. This also is things like in extreme weather events, having plans for continuity of operations, or in case of earthquakes or other things that may not be climate-driven. Climate adaptation planning and climate action planning, these are two that go more on to the resiliency side of things. So again, it's not so much how do we reduce emissions and stop climate change from happening? It's how do we adapt to it because its impacts are being felt? And then comprehensive plans, this is the new one that the state is now requiring it in two thousand twenty-nine for us. So in Kent, when we're talking about those climate vulnerabilities, they really fall into four categories. So the first is rising temperatures. We can't change it. We have a valley in our, in our, in Kent that is naturally much warmer than the surrounding non-valley areas of West Hill, East Hill, and surrounding cities. And so that is something that is just a known factor. But the increasing temperature can cause health impacts. It can cause impacts to infrastructure and to ecosystems. Another impact is precipitation and more severe weather. So this is not just about how much water is falling or not falling in case of droughts, but it's also when it happens. So it's not just about the quantity, but it's about timing as well. So for example, if it's falling later in the, in the springtime, and we're getting a lot more rain in the springtime, that means that the snow melt is going to happen faster, which could affect aqua for recharge and available drinking water. It could also mean lower stream flows, which could affect salmon habitat and the water temperature. So this is all really kind of interconnected things that we're going to be assessing. This is also, I want to reiterate, like, we aren't doing this alone. There's a lot of things that have happened at King County and PSRC and through U-Dub that we can lean on to utilize and bolster some of this. Another impact is wildfires and, and exposure to smoke. So lightning strikes can be causes of wildfires, less common in Western Washington, although we do sometimes get some brilliant shows out of them. But really, a lot of this is also from human causes, like sparks from cars or people in the woods and other things. And so that can affect also increased smoke, even if it's not in Kent where the wildfire is happening. From Canada all the way down to Oregon, that can affect our air quality here. And that can affect business operations, especially for outdoor workers, or, or also for people that are in, in indoor settings that may not have great filtration for air quality. And then the last one is high tide, storm surges, sea level rise, and flooding. This one made us scratch our heads a little bit because Kent's West Hill is over two hundred feet above sea level, and we do not have a shoreline that is coastal. But we do have the Green River, which is subject to tidal influence. And so what that means is when the storm surges or sea level rises happening, as the Green River is flowing into the sound, that water is, if it's higher levels, it means that the ability for the Green River to drain and get water out into the sea is affected. And so that has up, up basin impacts. I am in no way the scientist on this. And I am giving you the high level, here's what we did in our surveys. But we have talked with Mike and a lot of other people in Public Works who said, okay, that actually makes sense. It may not be our, our pack highway that's being flooded or washed out, but there are other impacts to the, the tidal basin. So what are we required to do? Growth Management Act was updated to require that we study these, I believe it's eleven, yes, eleven different areas or systems, and how we as a city would respond. Some of them are a little bit more obvious than others. I think when I look at this list, really what I'm seeing is it's not just Kent. So we can't do this alone as a city. There's a lot of partnerships with other agencies, with public health and human service providers, with other, just private entities and, and other groups. And so this will be a effort that takes a lot of coordination. It won't be the same level of coordination as the comprehensive plan, maybe, but I think the relationships that we've built through the comp plan will carry through as, as we're talking about climate as well. So in our comprehensive plan, we are proud and excited to announce that this is the first climate element that we've had in the comprehensive plan. And really, it sets out four main goals with policies under them. And the strategy is, first, we need to identify, track, and study what's happening. So we participate in a lot of conversations. There's been a lot of studies. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. I do not want to spend a million dollars hiring a climatologist from U-Dub to come tell us something very specific to Kent when that information is available countywide because of other partnerships we're part of. And so I, I would say, I don't think it is wise. You all may want to. We can have that conversation if that's the case. But I think the first part is, let's identify what resources are already available to us and identify, we've done a lot of cross-checking, a lot of identification of efforts that we're already doing for stormwater runoff and a lot of other things that already affect our environment and are contributing to our resiliency in terms of water quality and a lot of things that are affected by climate change. And so let's, let's put that under a roof and really say, where does Kent have the most impact? Where are we most vulnerable as a city? And so that is, goes into the next one of reducing the threat of climate risks. This is something that we as a city will be continuing to grapple with. There's a lot of conversations that are happening because the build it and they will come model does not work all the time. And so us providing cooling centers, I think is a great example of when we open up government facilities, people are less likely to come than if it's done by a community organization, or a church, or somewhere else where they trust, trust the place and trust the messenger and already familiar with going. And so some of this is identifying where the climate risks are and ways that we can reduce them, and also using partnerships through that. The third part is building preparedness and equipping residents. So a lot of this is knowledge is power. And so I happen to live with an emergency manager who deals with messaging around various emergencies, including climate risks. And so a lot of this is also encouraging participation in things like our CERT program, which seems very specific, but can apply for a lot of other situations and can help with social networks and, and social, social connection for increased resiliency. And then the la, and letting people know where to go and how to find that information when they need support and resources. And then the last one is increasing Kent's capacity through collaboration and strategic partnerships. Again, climate change doesn't know boundaries. What is being experienced in Renton is very similar to what's being experienced here. For us to do this in a silo makes absolutely no sense because there, we're better and stronger together. And so utilizing the K-4C partnership has been a huge launch point for us. And I think it'll, we will continue to want to build those, that infrastructure and networks. So setting us up for two thousand twenty-nine, we've talked about different big moves in each of the elements, such as the Benson Corridor, middle housing, multimodal level of service. For climate, really, this is, let's, let's hit the targets on what the requirements are and then make it Kent-specific. And so the first one is the greenhouse gas inventory, figuring out what the emissions are and what our sources are. This, you may, you'll hear about two different types of inventories. There's a community inventory, which looks at things that are not within our control. So it looks at the businesses, the residents, and the other things that are happening in the community. And then there's a municipal inventory, which is basically saying, as the city, it's kind of like an audit of our taxes, but it would be an audit of our greenhouse gas emissions. So there's two different types of inventories that are required. Good news is, K-4C is a huge support in this, and we're already working towards this effort. The Parks Department has also been working on some of this information as well that we'll need to continue to update and evaluate. Next part is the vulnerability assessment. I think we have a pretty good grasp on what the hazards and their impacts are. Doing the who and what is vulnerable is a little bit more localized to Kent, and that's where we'll be talking about this. And then figuring out at the end, reporting and communications around this. So when we met with the Community Advisory Group, when I told them I had a list of things that the city was already doing around climate, people were surprised. They said, I didn't know this. And so I think some of this is communicating that out is really important and making sure people know, again, the resources that are available if they have questions or, or need to be pointed in the right direction for connections with partners. And then the second part is, what are our goals and where are we moving forward? And this became especially salient in the Community Advisory Group, where they said, you know, there's a lot of requirements, and Kent needs to focus on what, what's our major efforts here? What are our major goals? Because we don't have the staff. Bellevue has an eight-person climate team to do their climate efforts. There's a three-person team that just got stood up in a south, another jurisdiction. And so I think part of this is also figuring out, like, what are the main things that are, are most important to Kent residents and where we can address? The, the good news, bad news is the state, when they made these requirements, specifically put in funding to do the planning around it. So we can fund efforts to update and create the new climate ele, well, we didn't use any funding to create this part of the climate element, but to meet the state requirements, we can access funding. If we identify things out of that, like, we need more EV charging, or we need X, Y, or Z, we have funding that we can tap into up to a certain amount for plans, the state is not funding any implementation. So as we're developing our plans, we're going to have to keep a lens on of what is realistic and what, what makes sense for the city's role versus for partners and agencies to do. Because by my quick calculation, I'm seeing the Parks Department for Parks and Rec, Facilities, Public Works Transportation, Utilities, Infrastructure, Human Services, ECD, there's many departments that are already doing a lot of this work as part of a and-one job task. But with this requirement to meet these objectives, we, there will be conversations around what's realistic for us to do as a city, and where should we be focusing and prioritizing our efforts? The Advisory Group, they had a lot of conversation, I think Councilmember Fincher was there. And there was a lot of conversation around, a lot of these things can be really good, but what's the opportunity cost? So if we're pursuing them at the, at the risk of potentially meeting housing targets or limiting housing targets, is that, is that worth it or not? And so I think as we move forward in the next five years, this is not to be doom and gloom, it's to say that these are really nuanced conversations that we anticipate bringing forward with a multi-department group to talk about as we talk about how we approach and, and address these issues. So your last slide is your friendly reminder. October eleventh, the draft gets sent, gets sent out to Commerce, PSRC, and the county for their evaluations. We're going to take another week to make it look, to finalize our pretty, it looking pretty for the public review. We have a lot of just final touches that Commerce doesn't care if we have the right image in, in the formatted document or not. So that will be public the following week. We have Land Use and Planning Board on October fourteenth and twenty, and the twenty-third, where we'll be walking through, here's your draft, draft comprehensive plan, and here's, here's the summary of major changes. We have a Community Advisory Group celebration on October thirtieth, and we would love for you all to join if interested. And then we're going to hearings November twelfth and November nineteenth, with the hope for council action at Committee of the Whole on the tenth. There will be a suite of ordinances that you will see. State law requires not just that we update the comprehensive plan, but that we do a lot of implementation ordinances as well. And so we've talked about this as we've been going through. The big one I want to highlight is there will be concurrent rezones with the change in the land use map for the preferred growth alternative. We are not required, but we are choosing to notify those property owners so that they're not surprised that their land use or zoning would be changing. And so those notices will be going out next week as well, to give people a month or so to ask additional questions if they have clarifying questions. So happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for your, for the update, Kristin. We appreciate all the hard work you do and looking forward to the final product.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.